Well, it's a minute past seven, so if that's all right, we'll get underway. I see we have the full board here, and we have some members of the public and the press and some other town officials, and that's always welcome. Thank you very much. So I'll call the Brandon Select Board to order. Is there a motion regarding the adoption of the agenda?
No move.
There's a second.
So a second.
Motion by Mr. Wyman and a second by Mr. Bailey. Are there any changes to be made to the agenda? Mr. Giles?
Yeah, I'd be curious to have an executive session on the process of the wetland land sale. I think there's a negotiating or securing real estate purchase or lease options in VSA 313 on paragraph two of the open meeting law.
All right.
Charlie, would you like for me to email that to you?
Would that be 10C? Does that sound like a good spot for that?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so we'll add an executive session regarding negotiating or securing real estate purchase or lease options per one VSA 313 A2 of the open meeting law. Are there any other changes to be made? If not, all in favor of the agenda, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Before we get underway tonight, I'm not generally given to making opening remarks, and these will be very brief. I do want to thank you all for being part of this meeting tonight, and I want to recognize that we have a number of items on the agenda that are of significance, perhaps more than recently usual. So orderly and respectful public comment is always welcome, and we have a dedicated agenda item for public comment at each meeting, and the board also appreciates public input on the discussion of any agenda item. That said, this is not a meeting of the public, it's a meeting of the select board in public. And so to facilitate the board's work, the board adopted its current rules of procedure in 2019. Please address all comments to the chair. State your name for the benefit of those connected by telephone, and take special care to be respectful of all others participating in the meeting. Let's all remember that each of us is here because we all want what is best for our town. Thank you. Item two is approval of the board minutes of January 11th. Is there a motion relative thereto?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wyman moves and Mr. Giles second, approval of the minutes of January 11th. Are there any errors or omissions? None heard? All in favor of approval of the minutes as submitted, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Say no. That's unanimous. Items three, the town manager's report. Mr. Atherton.
This is my report for the week to January 11th and 18th. I have received the final design for the current square parking area, which I attached to your board packets. We're still planning on completing the work in-house with the exception of electrical work for the lighting. Since then, I have lined up our electrician of record, Mr. Jeff Patch, to see if he wanted to do this work, and he is more than willing to, and he's going to see if he can get better pricing on the lights, the parking lights for us too, so. We always look forward to working with him. Had a Zoom meeting with Nancy McGuire from NRCS and Andreas Terizo from Watershed Consulting on the stormwater retention areas that we discussed a while back on Center Street Parking Area and Pearl Street. Just to remind you, this work is 100% grant funded. And the work will all be completed on town-owned property within the right of way, so we are looking at doing the area on the north end of the parking area behind Cafe Provence, just some earth changing there with more of like a retention pond type area to collect sediment, so it's not going in the river. And Park Street, we've got four similar situations, similar designs where there's actually already drop inlets that we're going to, you know, dig down a little. It's only like, I think, two or three feet depressions there. Install a drywall for overflow, and those will probably be grass at the end, so. This is part of what our stormwater master plan. They were two of the other areas that were that were recognized in that in that plan, so. We're checking them off, which is good, and then it's 100% grant funded is even better. Highway Department, when they haven't been out plowing snow, they've been cutting brush on roadways. I know they were up on Birch Hill Road last week, so they're finding plenty to keep busy. We've received $3,600 and change to date from logging off of some of the town forests, and operations will continue as weather conditions permit. Rec News, the ice rink frame has been built up at the golf course. Fortunately, the weather's been cold, so good time to make ice. Bill wants to thank Lance Larway and Tanner Romano, Cole Mason and Josh Provinsor of Naylor and Green for helping out. John Kerr donated the liner, and all of our highway guys, Dan, Brian, Jeff and Josh, they helped to install it, and Tom Kilpecks helped them out, and yeah, so we're looking at having that open by February 1st. The Get and Go Program, a partnership of the Legion and Brandon Aretor Project, has been excellently facilitated by the Assistant Direct Director, Colleen Wright. Dallas Lada and Lisa Pratt cooked up, packed and gave away 119 meals in the inaugural offering. Mallory's, thanks to Mallory's Automotive for sponsoring the groceries. Next meal will be February 1st, same day the ice rink opens. Gaff Host chefs will be Emily Olinger and Jessica Markowski of Catering Business Sorrel. Did I say that right? Groceries are sponsored by Union Street Grocery. And congratulations to Lisa Fenimore, whose savory cheddar apple bread pudding was the winning recipe in the Brandon Free Public Library collaboration, The Great Bake Off. It's a monthly competition sponsored by Olivia's Croutons, and the next challenge is chocolate cake, and entries are due by January 27th. To submit an entry, make a cake, take your picture and email Molly Kennedy or post on social media with hashtag ChocolateBrandon. So, there. That's all I have tonight.
So there, very good, Dave. Are there any questions for the town manager at this time? Any questions from the board? Mr. Wyman, Tracy Wyman?
Yeah, I just wanted to elaborate on the $3,600. That was that was this year. That's not a total. Correct, Dave?
You're talking about the logging operation in the town forest?
Yeah.
Yep.
I can tell you, I have it right here.
Dave's gonna check. Thanks, Dave.
This, no, this goes back to... It's December and one, we have one from January, so it's December and January. Yeah, it wasn't last year, it was in the spring.
Yeah, it's this season, it wasn't last season, is what I'm saying.
You are correct. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. That was money generated this logging season, not the previous season. Other board members with anything for Mr. Atherton? If not members of the public, I see Brent Buehler has a hand up.
Yes, good evening. I have a question, Dave, on the parking lot lighting. Do we know what those fixtures are going to look like? The light fixtures and their hours of operation?
Dave, you actually were unmuted, and now you're muted, and we don't hear you.
Sorry, Brent. They're gonna be there, you know, lights will be on in the evening. I mean, we can we can set them for whatever. The lamps, I thought I had the design for them here. They're the basic, like a square top. There'll probably be a three-foot concrete bollard on the bottom of them that they'll be mounted on, so they won't get run over. Pretty standard kind of parking lot type light. They shine down. I'm trying to think, there's some in town that have them. I just can't think of where right now. But it looks like a square box on the top, and it's a pretty, pretty basic design.
Okay, I'm glad to hear they shine down. That's kind of, I didn't want to assume, but that's great. And the pedestrian walk then is along that retention wall still, is that correct?
We're hoping that's the plan. I think we talked about it. Oh, I was at the Greenways meeting. I did reach out to the project manager there from Midway Oil, and it sounds like that's the way we're going to go, because it keeps it out of the travel, the traffic portion of the lot as well, so.
Right, and they make those improvements then, that improvement?
Yeah, that's their property, but they like the idea, and plus it gets away from the building and away from the cars, so.
Yeah, right, right. And then my last question is, I noticed there's some gravel areas that join the paved area. Is there, what retains that? Is there a curb or?
Where are you looking, Brent?
I think towards the back, towards the back, there's a gravel area, and maybe where the walk cuts to the retaining walls are gravel.
So, well, we have some gravel in the back because we did get some stormwater money out of this too, so we have to do, you know, on that little brook side there. And we don't own all the way back anyway. There's another property owner in the back there too, so. There won't be gravel through, no, everything will be paved from the road to our parking, except for where you see the dark spots, that's going to be grass. That'll be where the curb line is in the electrical box. We're looking at putting the Brandon You Are Here sign out there, so.
Well, I was just curious what retains the gravel to keep it from going washing onto the pavement or people parking on it, for that matter, I guess.
Well, the gravel would be on the other side of the curb, so.
It is a curb, okay.
Yeah, and there'd be an inlet there, there'd be an inlet too, so.
Okay, so there is a curb. I didn't see that note, that's why I'm asking. I guess I have one more question. It looks like there's a little outbuilding.
So because this was like a park and ride type grant, it would be a little bus stop building like we used to have up by Crosby's?
Oh, nice.
And I think we're gonna try, I did speak with, I think it was the bus, I can't remember if it was a bus or actor, about actually turning that into the bus stop for downtown, and they really liked it because of, they could, you know, go in through like a half circle drive. So that's what the plan is.
Great, sounds nice. Thank you. Very exciting.
Thank you, Brent. Other public questions for the town manager?
This is Sherry Bacarala, and I would like to also... So I would also like to just express some concern about the light fixtures and make sure that there's no light pollution onto our property, just because of adjacencies again. But by the sounds that Dave, you already have it covered, but I just wanted to say it out loud so that we were all on the same page.
Sure, and you know, I can speak to our electrician too and make sure that those are the types we get. I mean, that's what we're looking for anyway, so. But yeah, that's not a problem. We'd rather have the light staying on the ground than going out into the neighbors anyway.
No, I'm completely on the same page, and as far as the security goes, where the light's being on, I have noticed a difference with the lights being on at the town hall constantly as far as that new addition, and I feel like it's more secure than it was previously prior to our, well, our other conversations. So I wonder if we should take that into consideration for these lights back there too, because it is more secluded, and it could be more of a safety hazard.
Yeah, I mean, we could put them on a sensor, like we have the lamp posts on too. We're also looking at putting some type of a security camera down there too because of the, you know, the bus stop thing. It was part in the grant that we could add something in like that, so. We'll probably, we'll probably run something down there, just maybe even a Bluetooth camera or something to add a little more security.
That's wonderful, Dave. I really appreciate hearing that. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Sure.
Thank you, Sherry. Other public questions for the town manager? Bless you, Bill.
Bless you.
All right, if not, we can move along, and there's, you know, additional opportunities later. The next item is number four for public comment and participation. We used to call this items not on the agenda, so I usually do start with the board. Do any board members have any items that don't appear on the agenda that they'd like to address? And do any members of the public have any items that they'd like to discuss or raise for discussion that do not appear elsewhere on the agenda? Sue Gage?
I just wanted to mention that the Board of Civil Authority met last week, and we will be holding the town meeting election at the Brandon American Legion Post at 550 Franklin Street. And the polling hours will be different. The polls will open at 10:00 a.m. and close at 7:00 p.m. That's a change. It's usually seven to seven. This time it's going to be 10 to seven.
Thank you, Sue. Everybody's got that update info? Yes, Brent Buehler. Brent, we don't hear you.
Are they, can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
Are they going to be mailing ballots, or is that another discussion in this meeting somewhere else? Mailing ballots. I guess Sue made a comment, so I was wondering if they were mailing.
Sue, do you want to respond, or is that for the board?
That's actually a decision of the board in the next, your next agenda item under number two, so I will not comment at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brent. Other public comment and participation, items not on the agenda? If not, I do notice now that we have as number five on the agenda, the town meeting warning and so forth. But I wonder if because item six may potentially impact the town meeting warning, or will it not? Wait a minute, meeting warning, bond warning, move the meeting. No, I guess we can do it in the right order, right? It affects the ballot, right? If we do it, if we do anything on item six, it's going to affect the ballot, but not the actual town meeting. Okay, so we'll be on item five, as the agenda says. Are we ready to warn the town meeting warning for the informational meeting on March the first?
I'm ready to move that, but I thought we had an updated warning that we were given.
Right, so the warning that appeared in the packet does have the correct Zoom number.
Right.
What's missing on it, Tim?
Number 19.
Right, so that is related to our item six. Should we take up item six first?
I would say so, Seth.
Okay, I was on the...
We can go a little bit more smoothly.
So we'll hang on to number five for a minute, and we will take up item six, which is the Act 164 discussion. The town manager, so this was put on the select board agenda by public request, and we thank the person who requested that. So that is regarding regulation and taxation of cannabis, Act 164. And in the board packet, Dave provided quite a lot of background information regarding the opt-in clause of Act 164 and what it means for Vermonters, so. At this time, we can, we're working under the rules for small boards, so we can have discussion before we have any motions, or we can have a motion from the board, whatever the pleasure the board is.
I'd like to make a motion to include this on our warning, and then we can discuss it.
Okay, so Mr. Giles makes a motion to include a question for the public regarding regulation of, per Act 164 Regulation and Taxation of Cannabis. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Second for Mr. Coolidge. Okay, so discussion.
I'd like to hear what our representative Shaw has to say, and Stephanie.
We do now have both state representatives here. They have been consulted before the meeting, but we would love for them to speak to the meeting if they would regarding Act 164 and what it means for towns. Butch or Stephanie?
So, you want me to go, Steph, or you want to go first?
You are welcome to start. Go ahead.
Okay. So Act 164, as you know, is the cannabis, the cannabis bill that we passed last year. And as of an hour or so ago, I have learned that the governor has yet to appoint the Cannabis Control Board, Control Board, which will control the growing and sale of cannabis in the state of Vermont. That has, that has not yet happened. And once that happens, the Cannabis Control Board is then required to promulgate rules for the growth and sales of cannabis that are not currently in that bill. So what I, I can advise you on what you want to do, this is absolutely your decision. But promulgating rules is typically an eight to 12-month procedure. Minimum of them, eight, eight months, and then it can run as long as 12 months before you see the rules on how everything's going to happen. So I guess I would say that we as a state are a long ways away from selling retail marijuana yet. And that's, that's the news that I got about an hour ago on Cannabis Control Board, that that has yet to be, yet to be appointed. So we're like, if you were, if you were this close, I would say now we're this close. Moving forward with that, so that obviously is up to you folks on how you want to handle that. There's a lot of talk going on, there's a lot of chatter going on, but I couldn't advise you at all on what the rules are going to be. And if that sounds like a cop-out, it's not. It's just I can't advise you.
So I was going to say something maybe similar to, I'm not prepared to talk a lot about cannabis this evening, and I'm absolutely willing to come back and talk about it more. So I feel like there's not a, I feel like there's not a rush. That's how I feel. Like, we need to figure out what's going on with all of it and make sure we understand how this is all going to operate, but you're right, like, is it opt-in? So if it's going to be on the ballot, that it would be, it would be an opt-in, whether the town wants to have a cannabis store that would sell cannabis in town. So it's kind of, it's all, the bill's been passed, but because the cannabis board has, I think they just stopped receiving applications for members of that board just recently, and it hasn't, and so it hasn't progressed quite as far as maybe should have or could have, perhaps because of COVID, but so we still need to find out all the rules and regulations and how it's all going to be done. I would say that if you're going to put it on the ballot and vote, and vote it for whether to opt-in, you're still going to be sort of waiting for a while to figure out how to proceed.
And thank you to Butch and Stephanie for that valuable insight. Butch, did you have something else?
Steph, can I follow up? Yes, excuse me, Seth, can I follow up on Stephanie's comment? So, and Stephanie's spot on on this. The one thing that my question is, and that has not yet been resolved, is how the existing facility you have in Brandon molds or rolls into the new bill yet. I don't think those rules have been promulgated yet, so that's a question that's really, really outstanding right now.
Seth, do you want to explain what you, what you mean by that? Because maybe people don't understand that municipal pharmacies were going to be given preference for retail operations.
Right.
And I don't know the owners of the, of the, of the medical marijuana facility, and perhaps members of the board know more what's going on there, but they have the option of being sort of first up to become a retail establishment.
And Stephanie's spot on there. We don't know what the fees are going to be. We kind of think we know what the taxes are going to be. Don't know what the municipal tax rate is going to be yet, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of whetters. And I don't want to inject my personal feeling into it, but I will, just because I can. I think that you, I don't, I'm not sure that the retail sales of cannabis is going to be a financial boom for any town that goes in this. Don't care how you vote, one way or the other. But if you're looking for a financial boom, I don't think, I personally don't think it's going to happen because it's a statewide process going on. Be quiet on the end of that one.
Thank you to both of our legislators. Yeah, Tim Giles?
Yeah, since I made the motion, I would just say that part of what made me curious about, you know, having this on our ballot is that other communities are similarly having this discussion and asking their community to, you know, show whether they'd like this. I fully understand that it's a long ways off, and I also would say that nothing in this vote commits us in any way to actually having, you know, a marijuana dispensary in our town. It just allows us to then, you know, be prepared if the opportunity comes along. And I think the most important aspect is that it allows our community to speak. It allows people to actually weigh in on whether they like the idea or not, and I think that information alone is worth putting it on the ballot.
Thank you, Tim. Other comments from the board or from the public here tonight? Other input? Bill Moore?
Thank you, Seth. I just wanted to sort of chime in. You know, I'm with Tim in as much as it gives the opportunity for the, for the public to have their say. You know, and also maybe provides, you know, from an economic development standpoint, some signaling to potential investors that would look to maybe build facilities here, additional facilities here. I have in the past been in contact with the folks at, the name has changed a few different times, at our own medical marijuana facility, and at the last conversations I had with them pre-COVID, they had, you know, at least eternally, no plans to do retail in Brandon, knowing that they had, you know, the option to, but they had no immediate plans to do retail in Brandon, so if somebody else wanted to potentially do that, that... You know, they may get first crack. I guess that's why they've been spending, what, $25,000, $30,000 a year for those licenses, so they can be first up. But, yeah, just again, as a way of signaling or letting, you know, letting the Brandon folks speak, and also, you know, signaling to potential investors that would want to open up a facility on property here in Brandon that, you know, we're already doing it for the medical side. Why not the retail side if it's going to be something that the state, that's been decided statewide?
Further comment? Doug Bailey?
Yeah, I would love to have an opinion from Police Chief Brickell, just to see what he feels about retail cannabis in the town. That's what I'd like to hear.
Well, in all honesty, I don't know that it's my position to weigh in on this decision for the town and how they want to vote. Marijuana has changed dramatically over the last few years and the legalization and the non-enforcement of marijuana laws, and in all honesty, I think that if the town decides that they want to allow to have retail sales within the town, they actually have a setup through the, you know, through the process that is already in town, whether they choose to do that or not. And I think that it's going to be one of those things that will be regulated, but at the same time, my concern would be, as Butch and Stephanie mentioned too, that the rules surrounding how that process takes place is a very time-consuming process. And whether or not that has any impact on your decision to put that on the ballot or not really isn't an impact for me, but I think that that, how the rules are promulgated around retail sales is going to be a key issue in how successful or not it will be for a town, but I do agree that if the town is looking at this as an economic boom, short of a business opening up, I don't see it as being a moneymaker for the town, because we have surrounding states that already have retail marijuana available, and, you know, we're one of the last states that are going to weigh in on this, so I don't think it's going to be as lucrative as people may think.
Can I ask the chief one follow-up question, please?
Of course.
Just wondering, chief, if, you know, I know my own negative feelings on cannabis is driving high. I think there's enough distracted drivers on the road now as it is, and has there been any, any new developments enabled law enforcement to be able to determine if someone is driving impaired from marijuana? Determine uh if someone is driving impaired from marijuana?
Any new developments? No, but I can tell you that. Um, in order to process somebody that you have probable causes driving under the influence of a drug or narcotic. It's a very lengthy, time-consuming process. In which you have to identify, first of all, that the person that you are seeing impaired is not impaired by alcohol. Then calling a DRE or a drug recognition expert to the scene to evaluate and then taking that person. To a location to process them, and then if they disagree, applying for a certain part to draw their blood. So the process is not simple and it's not easy. Um, and I do think that there are those that are out there that that drive under the influence, absolutely. But um, the process hasn't been made any easier by any legislation for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Moore?
Uh, and just to to pile on my comments, this is not necessarily specific to. You know, our our, I guess, their economic development interests, not specific necessarily to the, you know, to retail, but the opportunity for growing. You know, a large-scale facility that, you know, that economic boom, the the jobs, uh, potential tax base for. Uh, you know, a large facility that uh that might open here. That's I wasn't referring to a shop being open in the middle of downtown. I mean, just that, but the fact that we would be potentially opening up for. Manufacturer for, you know, growing operations um to open up. To clarify.
Thank you, Bill. David Atherton?
Well, I think we're either going to put it on the ballot this year or next year, so um, there's obviously been more interest in. People calling you guys and us about it. It doesn't seem like it's going to hurt anything if the town votes to opt in or opt out this year or next year, so. I don't know. It it doesn't seem like we're we're just going to have this conversation again next year at the same time if. We don't do it right now.
Thank you, Mr. Atherton. Mr. Giles, would you take a friendly amendment to your motion regarding wording?
Uh, yes, of course.
Or would you entertain it? And before you tell me whether you'll take it, um, can I recommend that an amendment, I'll I'll move an amendment? That the wording of the ballot this year should include a question, shall the voters of the town of Brandon? Authorize cannabis retailers and integrated licensees in towns pursuant to seven VSA. Section eight sixty-three. Uh, and I would just note for background that this is the model. Um, of this question provided by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. Charlene?
Send that to me. You were speaking a little fast.
Yes, I can send it to you and um it will appear in the warning if it's passed, yes, but I will definitely send it to you. You want me to send it to you like in a? Text or something or? All right, I'll get it to you.
In the chat right now.
In the chat right now?
You you want me to put it in the chat, Seth, since you're doing something?
Oh, I don't know. I think I just did it. I don't know. Did it go?
Got it.
I think it's there. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
So yes, I I accept that friendly amendment.
Great. Is um further discussion? Are you ready to vote? Um, all in favor of placing a ballot question on this year's town meeting ballot to be voted by Australian ballot. On March second, worded as follows, shall the voters of the town of Brandon? Authorize cannabis retailers and integrated licensees in town pursuant to seven VSA section eight sixty-three. That's the motion. If we're ready to vote, all in favor of the motion of including it on this year's ballot for town meeting, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I believe that was unanimous. Thank you. Thanks to all for the input. And the council and uh, take no offense from our blatant disregard of it. Okay, now we can go back to item five, uh, if we can, the town report and town meeting discussion. Town meeting warning approval. Uh, so we have a warning for evening meeting. Uh, it for the evening meeting of March first. It's got Zoom information, including meeting ID eight four nine three seven four six one three three six. Bill Moore, before we go far here, can you tell us uh just basically? Why is there a new Zoom number for the town meeting, evening informational meeting on March first?
Uh, yes, this is so the setup is similar to Zoom meeting, but to allow for the. Potential number participants of, as requested, of five hundred to a thousand people. Uh, we moved to a webinar format, still allows for people to participate by way of speaking, identification, recording. Um, the all the difference between this, a Zoom meeting and the webinar is. What the people on the public side see and whether or not they can see the other people in the meeting. They can see the presenters. Which will be the select board, the moderator, town clerk, and anybody that's speaking, but they won't be seeing, you know. Seventy-five, a hundred, two hundred, three hundred and fifty faces. But it's uh, you know, from speaking, uh, a consultation with the folks at Zoom, um, this was the the best way to go. As far as a public meeting goes.
That is great information. Thank you, Bill, for um working with Zoom and thanks to. All who worked on that little project of making sure that we can ensure accessibility to a town meeting-sized crowd. Uh, rather than like a select board meeting-sized crowd uh for the Monday or, yeah, for the Monday, March first meeting.
So can I make a motion, Seth?
Yes, please.
I'd like to move that we accept the town warning with the addition of number nineteen, which we just voted on. That's in our packet.
Right, so the uh warning in the packet has the correct Zoom number and it has two items to discuss at the evening meeting. And then it has a list of, uh, there's one item on the warning for the ballot to be voted on March second, which is to elect the officers. And then there are items two through eighteen regarding specific appropriations of property tax. And there would now be item nineteen, which is the uh cannabis question per Act one sixty-four. And then a bond article, which we're going to talk about again. Is that correct, Mr. Giles?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so Mr. Giles moves adoption of the warning as it was included in the board packet for tonight. Plus the addition of question nineteen, which we just voted upon. Is there a second? Second for Mr. Wyman. Any discussion on these warnings? If not, all in favor of adopting the town meeting warning as we have just described it, say aye. Any opposed? Say no. That's unanimous. We then have uh in the packet a revised bond warning approval. This came, yeah, go ahead.
I I move that we accept the revised bond bond warning.
Is there a second? Motion for Mr. Giles and a second for Mr. Wyman to adopt the revised bond warning. Any discussion on this? This is regarding the wastewater treatment plant proposed upgrades.
You know, the only discussion I would put if we're um at that point just before the vote is to thank Sue for putting this together and the other warning for that matter. It represents a a good amount of um following details and getting information together, so thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue. Yeah. Further discussion or questions? If not, all in favor of adoption of the bond warning as it was included in the packet, the revised bond warning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no. That also was unanimous. Item C, town meeting considerations under H forty-eight. So Mr. Atherton included H forty-eight in the board packet, talks about different changes that can be made. Uh, we have listed here. Under letter C, we have Roman numeral small i, one. Authorized to move the date of our twenty twenty-one meeting. I don't believe that's under consideration. Based on the warning that we just adopted, so we'll skip that one. And item two, authorized to mail out annual meeting Australian ballots to all active registered municipal municipal voters. What's the pleasure of the board on mailing ballots to all voters for town meeting?
I make that motion.
Tim Giles moves, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Doug Bailey. Is there any discussion?
I would just say that the um it was an amazing turnout in our general election when we mailed out ballots, and I hope we go to mailing out ballots all the time. Because it seems like a really efficient way to get more participation in our elections.
Thank you, Tim. Other inputs, public comment? Sue Gage, chief election official.
I would just like to say that um I I I very much support the mailing of ballots. Especially during COVID because it minimizes the number of people that are coming through the polls. Um, so I I hope that you do vote to mail the ballots and I've been planning, so I've got a good plan.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you for all the hard work that you do uh running elections in Brandon and uh thank you for herding together the Board of Civil Authority. And all the election officers and the JPs. And the the very, very long days that you do ahead of and during and following up on our town elections. Is there further comment on this? If not, ready to vote, all in favor of mailing annual meeting Australian ballots to all active registered municipal voters, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Say no. That was also unanimous. Item six, we have accomplished. Item seven, we have some appointments. Uh, Mr. Atherton, do you want to introduce item A under number seven?
Sure. Um, so. Stephanie Jerome stepped down um from her planning commissioners. Role, um, obviously Mont Piller's keeping her a little busy, um, be greatly missed. Um, I. This is really our first public um announcement of that. We have received um one person with some interest, so. Um, I don't know what the board wants to do with that.
Thank you, Dave. What is the pleasure of the board? Tim Giles?
Um, I I move that we accept um the um. Uh, the volunteer to be on the planning commission?
Is there a second? Is there a second? I would say that there is not a second. What's the pleasure of the board? Mr. Atherton?
Can I weigh in on this?
Yeah.
Um, normally. We do post something when someone gets off the board. Um, I know we went through this last year, maybe about the same time. So. You know, we can toss it on the website and maybe throw something in the paper again that we've got a few vacancies to see if there's more interest. But I I know we we did have this similar discussion last year too, so. And I believe we warned it or put a notice of it after.
I I was just going to say, I thought that's what, I was just reading that. I thought that's what we did, but I wasn't sure.
Doug Bailey?
Yes, I I was going to say the same thing. I have nothing uh against this person. I think that would be a good person, but I think we need to just uh. Make sure we no- notice the uh the opening, at least for one select board period. Uh, same as we did last year. I think that we should just get that in the paper and then make this appointment next meeting. Two weeks from today.
Is there objection to using tonight as the initial announcement of the vacancy? And soliciting um interest in the vacancy? Uh, there's some public comment. Brent Bueller?
Um, yes, I just wanted to say, could this then become a policy whereby it's posted rather than? You vote on somebody and then decide to post it? Could it just become a policy for these appointments? That it's posted first?
Very thoughtful suggestion. I think that there was um some movement in that direction previously, and I don't know that the board ever did do a policy. Uh, but we did move in that direction and perhaps we need to move. Further in that direction or back in that direction to establish a policy so that um something's in place. Thanks for that constructive thought, Brent. Is there objection to announcing it tonight and holding it over until the next board meeting to make, expecting to make an appointment at the next board meeting? No objection?
Question I would have, is there is there a uh coming up meeting that they would not have an agenda? And and thereby not be able to do anything if we do postpone this?
The planning commission meets the first Monday, is that right? So they would meet again before the select board meets? There are seven planning commissioners spots. Yeah, Charlene?
They have decided to um, oh, wait a minute. No, I'm sorry. Yes, the energy committee. For the first first Monday in February.
Right, so the first Monday in February is the first day of February. We won't meet for a week after that, until a week after that. Um, there are seven slots on the planning commission, six are filled. I believe they should not have trouble having a quorum.
They could still have a quorum. Okay, that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. So absent any further discussion?
I I I would just um. Thank the person who I um who put their name forward. We always appreciate people having interest in um serving our town and um. And and I I appreciate that someone would throw their name in.
Very good. So uh, further comment? If not, we'll go ahead and we'll proceed that way uh by announcing tonight that there is a planning commission vacancy. Thanks to Stephanie Jerome for serving on the planning commission. This uh, I don't want to put anyone on the spot, including Dave or Stephanie. We know when the term ends that we're talking about uh for this particular. Spot. Dave does know. Yeah.
So it's actually a three-year term ending uh June thirtieth of this year.
It ends June thirtieth of this year. Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, item B, animal control, uh interim animal control officer. Dave, what can you tell us about an interim animal control officer?
So um. I have someone, well, one of our employees had sparked some interest in. Um, filling in the gaps while we actually post this position as well. Um, Tim Kingston, who works in our wastewater department. Has stepped up to say that he could do whatever needs to be done in this animal control position, so um. Now, his 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 family works with animals all day, every day. Um, we know, we know him well. Um, and it'd be nice to have someone that could respond to some calls while we. Get this posted out and see what happens.
Dave, can you clarify um who has been handling animal control since the last board meeting?
It's just been going to PD, but I think we only have had one, one call, chief? Well, isn't there something with a cat?
No, I think we've we've had three or four calls since. Um, but yeah, they were, majority were cat calls.
Yeah.
Thanks to the police for taking on uh that role recently. What's the pleasure of the board regarding uh an interim appointment?
I'd move to appoint Tim Kingston for an or. For an interim animal control officer till we can get this. Posted now.
Is there a second to Mr. Wyman's motion? Second for Mr. Coolidge? Is there discussion on appointment of Tim Kingston as interim animal control officer? None heard? Ready to vote? All in favor of appointing Tim Kingston as interim animal control officer, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Item C, posting method for the permanent animal control officer position. Mr. Atherton, did you have a recommendation or?
Well, I I think we're probably, I'm just thinking now that we have two vacancies to post, I might as well just get something ready for. The paper and we'll post it online and. Shoot it out on some of our social media. Things if that works. I mean, the thing is like you guys, the the select board, you know, are the ones that appoint the ACL. If you're okay with me. Sending out, you know, a notice of vacancy, I can do that.
Yeah, so uh you'll you'll place a notice in the newspaper of record, the Brandon Reporter? For both the planning commission spot and the animal control spot, is that correct? Okay?
It might be worth too. I think Elena and I'll go through what we have for other committees and.
Yes.
If what we have for vacancies there, seeing as how we're, you know, we're coming up to term ends and things too. if what we have for vacancies there, seeing as how we're, you know, we're coming up to term ends and things too, so.
I think there's one on the DRB.
He, yeah.
I put that in their annual report.
That's right, because someone got done this year. Yep. So why don't I, why don't I do that? We'll get Elaine and I'll get it together and we'll do one big notice.
Any objection?
No, well, we when we'll vote on this, we'll at our next board meeting on these positions. Is that what the intent is?
Do you want to do that? You want to give it some time or you want to just go once, when's the next meeting, February?
Okay, basically three weeks, right?
No, it's just two weeks.
Two weeks, right.
February eighth. It's up to you guys.
Tim.
Yeah, I I'm I'm open to that possibility. I I think it may require a little bit of interviewing and vetting of the animal control officer position. And if we can do that before the next meeting, great. It's it if we need more time, you know, obviously we'll take more time.
Okay.
Is it your, is it your thinking that Mr. Atherton is going to do the interview for the board and come with a recommendation? Or is it thinking that you want to participate or you want someone from the board to participate with Mr. Atherton on the interview?
Yeah, I had.
Oops, sorry.
Go ahead, Dave.
You guys have to be the ones to appoint, so I would, I would suggest that when you are ready for interviewing, that it would go to at least someone on the board that's designated to to do that, or it comes to the full board. I mean, we can do a full board via Zoom at a meeting, you know. But you guys are the ones ultimately have to appoint, so.
I I'd certainly be willing to serve on a an interview group if, you know, I've done working groups with the other board members. And so if if somebody wanted to do that, I I'd be willing to be part of that group.
I would too.
Great.
Suggestion then, I'm looking at the calendar. If we, so we're only two weeks out until the next meeting. That seems kind of short to post a notice. Would it be possible to post it until like February twelfth? And then we'd have the week prior to a next select board meeting to conduct some interviews if that was the case and then go from there.
Excellent.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Are we going to do that on all the positions?
Well, I mean, those are just letters of interest usually. So I mean, if you want to meet someone in person, fine, but I think it would just be. I don't, I don't think we've done well rushing things like this. It's better to just keep our ducks in a row.
Tracy, would you prefer to have an interview committee for the planning commission? I mean, I'm open to that.
No, I just, no, I was just wondering if if we're going to try to do the whole or just for the one position. I'm good with just the one position. That's fine.
We could see what kind of response happens. It'd be nice if there was a lot.
Be named, yeah.
Is that the consensus of the board? Mr. Giles and Mr. Wyman are available to sit with Mr. Atherton and any applicants for the ACO position. He would post the ACO position as we've described with letters due to him by February twelfth, on or before February twelfth. And then during the week of February fourteenth, it would be expected that that subcommittee or working group of two selectmen and the town manager would try to arrange an interview with the candidate or candidates. Sound good?
It sounds great.
All right, let's go. Let's do it. Item eight, declaration of inclusion. There's one in the packet. Pleasure of the board? Tim Giles?
I make a motion. I'm actually trying to scroll down to where I can read this. If you'll give me just a moment, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I I make a motion that that we pass this declaration of inclusion. It that reads the town of Brandon condemns racism and welcomes all persons regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, gender, identity, or expression, age, or disability. And will protect these classes to the fullest extent of the law. As a town, we formally condemn discrimination in all of its forms and commit to fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community. And lastly, the town of Brandon has and will continue to be a place where individuals can live freely and express their opinions.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second from Mr. Wyman, is there any discussion from the board?
Well, I might just start off since I made the motion. You know, a couple other communities are making statements like this. I I think it's 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 a way of showing that we're welcoming to everybody. And so it's just another kind of positive thing we can do that is obvious to many of us, I think. So in some ways it doesn't need to be said, but in another sense, it's it's a positive statement of our values.
Thank you, Tim. Further discussion from the board? Are you ready to vote? All in favor of the declaration of inclusion as it appears, say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. Thank you. Item nine, there's an equal opportunity policy in the packet. It says it's for the library grant. Mr. Atherton, you want to tell us a little bit about it?
I sure can. So as you know, the the library had applied for Community Development Block Grant to do their renovations to the library. And we, as the municipality, have to be the applicants for it because that's just how it works. And if you remember, they they did, they didn't get the first round, but they got the second round. So and this is just what one of the steps that VCDB requires or GVA requires in the grant application. We had to do the same thing when we did the town office here, so it's you know, it's, it's just one, it's is what it is. It's the equal employment opportunity policy. So I'm sure you guys all read it and we have to do it when you use federal funds on any projects too. So we did it for segment six as well.
What's the pleasure of the board on the municipal policy that has been discussed, Mr. Giles?
I make a motion that we accept this policy.
Is that a second from Tracy? Move to approve from Tim Giles and a second from Tracy Wyman. Is ready discussion? All in favor of the equal opportunity policy, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Did we get a vote from Mr. Bailey? Your aye? Okay, that's unanimous. Item ten, there are two warrants. The first one is a regular warrant and the second is a Route seven construction warrant. What are the wishes of the board?
Thank you.
Mr. Coolidge moves to approve. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second from Mr. Wyman. Any questions on any of the bills?
One question.
Please.
Mr. Chair, top of page two, to Attorney Carol Pell and whatever, the first one where it says sale to Foley. Hey, I guess what sale is that? What did we sell?
We didn't sell anything, Doug. They, this was this was a Brandon Industrial Corporation lot that they were going to purchase pre-COVID and decided that with everything that was going on to not follow through with the sale. We had been, Bill and I had been working with the Brandon Industrial Corporation to try to get these lots moved. There's two left that are buildable. And V I C has no money, so it was, it was our attorneys that had drafted documents and everything for it and someone had to pay for it. It's going to be paid at the closing by the purchasers and obviously the closing didn't happen, so.
That was my question is why it wasn't paid by the purchaser. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. This is a good example of sometimes the efforts, you know, that in economic development go on behind the scenes. So thanks for clarifying that. Any other questions on bills as they appear in the warrant? If not, ready to vote, all in favor of approval of the two warrants, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That was unanimous. Okay, before we go to an executive session, it's eight oh one. We will take a moment for any announcements anybody on the call would like to make for the benefit of the community.
I have an announcement.
Hey, Bill, thanks.
I just want to let everyone know that the Get It and Go Meals this next week on February first, you know, as David pointed out, it's it's hosted by Sorrell, sponsored by Unstreet Grocery. Anybody can pick it up. These Get It and Go Meals are just, you know, feel like cooking, show up, ask how many meals it's paid, it's drive-through, you don't even get out of your car. This is a really nice way to, you know, sort of get together as a community and providing food. And we've had a lot of donations and that's made it made it so now that it can continue on. It was originally going to be first and third Mondays. Now we're going every Monday in February. So everyone know February eighth, there'll be turkey dinner. Turkey dinner with dessert is rice pudding. It's being hosted by the Neighbor's Farm and sponsored by The Bookstore. And on February fifteenth, it'll be chicken and biscuits with dessert is brownies. And it's hosted, the hosts are the cooks, Dallas Lad and Lisa Pratt. And the sponsor for that is Lori Bertrand CPA. It's five PM. This is a great opportunity to just get some good food and, you know, the region has been amazing. It's stepping up along with the Brenner Area Toy Project and, you know, the Brenner Brenner Rec organization. This has just been a really nice thing and people have been clamoring over it. So just let you know, free food.
Outstanding announcement. Thanks, Bill. Other announcements for the good of the community? Bernie Carr is leaning in like he might have something to say. I'm on the edge of my seat. No, he's saying no. He's waving me off. Anyone else? Okay, if not, I do want to thank you all for attending. Thank you for the civility as we discuss some important stuff. And I I think everybody should feel a consensus of happiness about how things are turning out, I hope. So at this time, the board is going to need to have a motion to go into an executive session regarding the real estate possibility.
One more.
Move for Mr. Wyman. Is there a second?
Sure.
Second for Mr. Coolidge. All in favor of entering executive session per Vermont Open Meeting Law to discuss real estate with the town manager, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Okay.